Good afternoon, candidates, moderator and timer and to our viewers. Welcome to the candidate forum for the Northbrook Glenview District 30 School Board. This forum is brought to you and sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Glenview Glencoe. The League is a nonpartisan political organization. We never support or oppose candidates or political parties. We are also a political organization that we actually take it, take action on governmental issues for which positions have been adopted through extensive membership study and agreement. The League encourages informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and seek to influence public policy through education and advocacy. Thomas Jefferson once said, "An educated citizenry is a vital requisite for our survival as a free people." And that is why we bring these forums to you so that you be can can become part of this education, educated citizenry before you cast your votes in the April 4 election. I'd like to introduce our school board candidates. Zaviette Blonder, Kevin Glowatz, who is not with, who is unable to join us today. Pamela Manichoto, Amar Rizki and Patrick Wang. These five candidates are running for four positions. The election itself will take place on April 4th, on Tuesday, April 4th. But there are several dates ahead of there that are, you may want to take, what may want to keep in mind. The last day to register to vote online, the last day to register online to vote is tomorrow, March 19th. The first day of early voting is Monday and runs for two weeks, including weekends. The last day of early voting is Monday, April 3rd, and the first, and the day of election is Tuesday, April 4th. Even though spring break falls within these dates, there are plenty of opportunities for you to cast a ballot either in person or via mail. And we encourage everyone to take advantage of those opportunities. Just a few ground rules in summary. The names were not drawn earlier. The candidates have agreed to begin opening statements in alphabetical order by first name. Those opening statements will be for two minutes. The questions asked of the candidates today were selected by the League and the moderator from those submitted directly by the voters in the district. The moderator may ask a follow up question at her discretion. Each question will be directed to all candidates. They will, each question will be answered by each of you. Candidates are allowed up to 90 seconds to respond to a question. You will respond to questions in alternating order. The moderator will keep track. Candidates are allowed up to 90 seconds for closing statements. And they will be delivered, unlike this statement here, we agreed before the forum began that they would continue in the alternating order that the questions are asked. Statements and responses will be timed and prompts will be visible to both the candidates and the viewers. If throughout, if you have any questions regarding today's forum or questions regarding the election or how to cast a ballot, the League of Women Voters is always available to you through our website or through this email address. And with that, I'd like to introduce our moderator, Lori Gwynally. Lori is an experienced moderator and is a member of the Arlington League of Women Voters of the Arlington Heights area. She is also our statewide issue specialist with a specialty in mental health. Lori, you may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So we are going to begin our opening statements. As previously stated, all the candidates will have two minutes. So candidate Rizki is going to start off, if you would please.
Thank you. Good afternoon again. My name is Amar Rizki. I reside in Northbrook, Illinois. And I'm here to highlight my candidacy for District 30's school board seat. In 2013, my wife and I were researching schools for our eldest child in the suburbs. We came across District 30's website. Westcott had just received a Blue Ribbon Award and everything we learned about the district. We were convinced that that would be the place for the future of our family. Fast forward that to today, we couldn't be prouder of to be part of this community. Our son has successfully graduated. The district is now in high school and our daughter, younger one is in fifth grade. I've always been passionate about education, which led me to tutor kids when, when I was in high school in Pakistan. It also led me to tutor kids in and mentor kids in Chicago Public Schools. And for the past four years, I've had the pleasure to serve on the District 30 School Board. Although I'm an investment professional by training, I found public service as my calling instead of Wall Street, which led me to join Cook County Government where I served as their Chief Financial Officer till last June. Since then, I've now joined the Barack Obama Foundation as their CFO and responsible managing its finances. I believe my passion, expertise, when combined with the collaborative approach to problem solving management, has been an asset to District 30's School Board. As ever, in short, districts' resources are spent in a manner that is maximizing the learning experiences for all our children. Over the past four years, I've worked collaboratively with the rest of the board and making sure that we've achieved a lot from completing major facility upgrades to responsibly navigating our COVID-19, as well as establishing diversity equity goals and more recently hiring our district's new superintendent. My goal for the new term would be to push for a turn on investment and take our children's academics to the next level. We saw learning suffer throughout the pandemic and we want to make sure that the board has clear focus on our goals and resources to ensure our kids can go flourish. I thank the League and the community members for this opportunity and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Candidate Manichoto, now I've mixed it up. Manichoto, you're next.
Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Pamela Manichoto. I have two children in District 30 right now, one in third grade and another in first grade at Westcott. Another one will be joining shortly in two years as he's still in preschool. My husband and I moved here in 2016. We're both transplants to the area. I am originally from Texas. My husband is from New Jersey. So like Amar, we had to do a lot of research since we didn't really know the area that well. And as we were researching, we did find that the district had wonderful accolades that we saw and it just drew us to here. Now that we have lived here now seven years, it's been a wonderful community. We've, I've been able to be part of Westcott through the PTO. I've served now four years and I think I've shown the community how hard I'm willing to work for not just my children, but for the whole. I was actually recommended by the PTO Board to think of running for the school board. And I was excited to hear that as this is something that just seems to fit well in my, in, in my pursuit to better our community and better our schools. I'm excited for the opportunity and I thank everyone for their time.
Thank you very much. Candidate Wang, you're up next.
Thank you very much, Lori. And good afternoon, everyone. My name is Patrick Wang. It's a great pleasure to have this opportunity to run for the member of District 30 School Board. I'm a parent of two children who are attending Westcott and Maple. We've been living here since 2019 and we do love the district and the schools activities, which the kids have been involved pretty heavily. I'm so happy to see that they are growing not only on their own, but also with the kids, other families and all the community members together. So I'm deeply committed to ensure our school is supposed to provide the best possible education to every kid. So I also firmly believe that the key to sustaining a successful and reputable school district like us is to work collectively with all the stakeholders, such as the kids, the parents, the teachers, the school leaders. So if I get a chance to be elected to communicate, to work for a community, I'll definitely try to enhance the communication and work the best to ensure that our school have the necessary resources and the support to provide a kid with an exceptional education. Personally, I'm a corporate banker with many international experience and a diverse culture background. So I believe that will help me to bring value to the table to ensure our school to have a very solid financial foundation and effective operational implementation, as well as the crucial strategic plan in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Blonder.
Hi, my name is Zaviette Blonder and I am incumbent runner. I'm running for four more years on this District 30 Board. I have had the pleasure of serving for the last four years and very excited to welcome our new superintendent, which is one of the reasons I decided to run again in order to make sure that it is a smooth transition and try to use the information that I have in my experience to make sure that she has a good experience. We're very excited to have her. I am the mother of two boys. My older one is a senior who will be going off to college this summer and my younger one is in seventh grade at Maple. I have been a resident of District 30 for the last 20 years. And I've been active in the PTO and in the schools for the last 13. I started with being a parent and a room parent and every possible job you can think of in the PTO at Westcott, ended up with being the president of the PTO for two years. Was very involved and part of the referendum to build our new Maple, which is something we are very proud of. And then continued with running to the board in the last four years. I'm excited for the next chapter. I'm hoping that now that things are not as focused on COVID. We can focus on things that we really want to and that are important to us, including mental health and meeting every child where he's at and trying to get them to the next level. I'm excited to be part of a diverse board and hoping that this will continue. And I am excited for the next chapter.
Thank you. Okay, now we are going to start with our questions. Candidate Manichoto will be first. And the first question is, "The pandemic brought with it unprecedented stresses and challenges for school districts. What is your assessment of how District 30 handled those challenges and what would you have done differently?"
Now, this is a great question as this was one of the motivating factors for me to looking into getting involved with the school board because I was fascinated with how well the current board handled everything. They were delightful in every which way and tried to make everybody as calm. They, I mean, it was a something that came out of left field and they handled it with grace. They were able to be very progressive from what I could see, you know, on Facebook and like other surrounding areas, other surrounding districts. We were one of the first to open our schools back up and not only did they open the school, but those people that felt uncomfortable sending their children back, they were able to do, you know, they could stay home and they allowed those children and those families to stay home and still continue the education. And then, you know, as things progressed with the masks, they also, they handled that wonderfully. They followed the science. They followed the data as well as allowed the community to go and speak and, and they took everything and just handled it wonderfully. So it's great mentors that are still there and I'm glad to see two incumbents still trying to come back for another four years because that would be great teaching for us if we ever were faced with a similar issue. I thought they handled it with grace and we can only learn from District 30's Board.
Thank you. Candidate Wang, same question.
Thank you. I agree. I mean, the school did a very professionally and very efficiently. As a parent, we can feel like this was first of all, first of all, set the tone as a very calm environment and a trustable and a transparent environment by providing a lot of information. Every time there is an involvement in this situation, we'll be informed. And there is a very strategic move based on the guidance given by either the CDC or maybe the government from the state level, from the county level that we, as a parent, will be informed. So we first of all, stay very upfront of what's going on. And also, you know, we understand there, there is some debating, right? And there's some discussion about how do we practically implement the strategy? And the, the ongoing discussion is very transparent and pretty well balanced with the outcome as a very satisfactory result. And then we see we have a fairly speaking, very relatively low infection ratio here. And we were, like mentioned, we were one of the very first to reopen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Candidate Blonder.
It's, it was a challenging time to deal with COVID. I don't think I would do it differently. That's why we did it the way that we did. Open communication being on top of the information that we have, following the science, following the data, following the instructions that we receive, always being open to, to hearing what the community is thinking, always keeping an open communication with everyone. You know, I, I think that we, given the circumstances, I think that we did a very good job. I'm very grateful for an administration and teachers that have gone above and beyond for our children. And I think that, that all families in our district have gained from it and, and try to, trying to look at the, the half full. You know, we, there are things that we learned through there that we can still use. For example, we still do parent conferences on Zoom, which parents actually appreciate. It makes it easier for them to attend. But I do think that we handled it very well, being very well prepared and on top of it through the, throughout the whole time.
Thank you. Candidate Rizki.
Thank you. No, I think I will echo everything my fellow candidate has said, and specifically as Zaviette mentioned. You know, we did an amazing job given the circumstances and what we were facing. Just to give you a little more specifics, the two approaches we took was one, on one hand, we wanted to make sure we're using best practices and science. And on the other hand, we wanted to make sure that we're listening to all views of, in our community amongst our staff members, amongst our parents, to ensure that we're balancing both of those elements. And by ensuring that, we were able to open up the schools back in August of 2020 for the youngest of our kids who, you know, has shown repeatedly that they needed the in-person learning, especially our special educated, especially their kids that need special education. And so by doing that, deploying our resources more carefully towards achieving that goal and keeping public safety in mind, public health in mind, we were able to make sure that we were open to those things. What I would do differently, probably not a lot different, but I would, now that we've had this under our belt, we would use our resources more wisely a little bit, maybe not spend things on, on cleaning supplies, things like that, but also, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Next question. What do you see as the top needs of the district and how would you address them? And we are going to start with candidate Wang.
I think the, on top of my mind is there, there is a evolving environment right now economically and globally. So how we can convey that information a little bit more into the design and the prospect, perspective of the education curriculums to help the kids build up something that can help them well prepared for the ever-changing tomorrow and for their personal success will be a very meaningful but challenging topics. I believe this is something has already been talked about a lot. But I think especially given all the changes, which is unprecedented. For example, like we see the new technologies, the chat, chat GPTs coming out. Is it going to shape the, the future world of, of jobs, of careers? Maybe they don't need any more lawyers, you know, this is just a joke Pamela, but yeah. What are we going to do? So all these kinds of things, the topics, the mindset to be open minded. This will be very challenging, but this could be something, you know, on top of mind to just introduce into some kind of brainstorm into our strategic planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Blonder.
Hi, I think our focus in the last few years has definitely been on facilities and buildings. And now that we've accomplished that, we've done some renovations at Willowbrook. We put an addition on Westcott. And obviously we built a beautiful new middle school, Maple. Our focus can finally change. This is a great time for us to focus on mental health, to support the kids, like I said before, at every level, meet the kid where he's at and get, make sure that they're going forward to the next level and allocating our resources in the, in the right direction. I'm hoping again that we can focus on diversity, equity, accepting all children and making sure that they feel that they belong. And, and that would go as well for teachers, administration and every person that has anything to do with our community. So again, we were done with facilities and the next, the next focus should really be on how we go from here to the next level, both for education and for mental health.
Thank you very much. Candidate Rizki.
Thank you. Now I pretty much echo everything Zaviette mentioned around in terms of our next needs, but more emphasize on, on diversity, equity and inclusion. We included that as a board goal a couple of years ago. But there's a lot of things to unpack when it comes to that and not just ensuring we have curriculum that speaks to that, but also reflect that into our hiring practices when it comes to staff and administrators. And so we've taken some good steps towards that. We want to make sure we continue with that. But then going back to, to the point earlier, we made a huge investment when it comes to our real, real estate portfolio. Now deploying that to make sure that we have the best educational outcomes is the, the most paramount thing for, for our children.
Thank you very much. Candidate Manichoto.
I'm basically going to echo the same. I've seen, you know, the goals set out by the board now, now that we can focus not just on the improvements of the buildings, but now we can improve the education of our kids and sustain the competitiveness of our district. Like Lamar had said, we can invest on diversifying our administration, our teachers, because that is a big platform that I, that I'm basically running on is diversity and inclusivity of, of the school district. I also do believe that a big issue that's going to be coming up on the tail end of COVID is probably the mental health. We need to have some kind of focus on that. Just help the kids transition and learn how to work through all these challenges that are being thrown at them left and right. So like I said, those are big two issues, but I think we, as a collective here, I think we can achieve the greatness and sustain that competitive that is District 30.
Thank you very much. Okay, our third question. What do you see as the role school board members as opposed to teachers, administrators and parents? And in, in ensuring that the district effectively serves its students and the larger community? And we are going to begin with candidate Blonder.
Thank you. I think that there is a very clear difference between being an administrator or someone who works at the school, being a parent and being a board member. When you are a board member, your responsibility is to look at the whole district as a whole. We hire and fire our superintendent and our goal is to make sure that they run a good show and that we are getting the results that we need. We do not go into the nitty gritty. If we do, that shows that we're not a very well-run district. It is our job to make sure that we pick the best person for the job and that they run a smooth, successful district for us. Again, we, we stay on the balcony and we overlook and make sure that it's run the right way. We do not step down to the dance floor.
Thank you. Candidate Rizki, same question.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's a big difference between governance and administration. And Zaviette spoke about that very well. You have to make sure that your, your purview as a governor of the, which we serve as a board of District Board, we, all of the elements of the, the board of the school running is running properly. Just to give you a little more example, as a finance professional, you know, I'm not going to tell the, the school business officer which bills to pay. I can, because I know how, how to do that too as my day job, but that's not my role. My role is to make sure that the finances are being run responsibly, our taxpayer dollars being spent responsibly. And the plan that, that the administration is presenting has all of those elements in there. And so that is the difference between me as an administrator, which I do in my day job, and as a, as a governor for the board of District 30 is what I would play.
Thank you. Candidate Manichoto.
Again, echoing just, the difference is major. I mean, it's the administrators are dealing with the day-to-day, whereas the governors are just making sure everything is running smoothly according to our rules or our goals that we have set. The school board is there mainly to collaborate and support the superintendent and follow the curriculum that she has or he has set out and make sure everything goes according to plan and not get into the nitty gritty as candidate Blonder pointed out.
Thank you. Candidate Wang.
Thank you. Definitely agree with everybody's points earlier. Besides, I think as a school board member, there's also a very important responsibility to act as the bridge between the schools, the teachers, the, and the, the parents and the kids. So we have to be open to hear what they want as the majority voices to take care of everyone and convey that information into part of our strategy and set that, set of the goal, set of the measurement. And, and as everybody mentioned, to keep governing that, managing that, and as well as adjust that whenever it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So our next question. Why should a district with only two elementary schools and its related administrative expenses exist rather than being consolidated with one of the surrounding districts? And we are going back to candidate Rizki to start.
Thank you. That, that's a good question and it's something that, you know, I think all boards across the state of Illinois are facing around that. When it comes to education, we want to have neighborhood schools because it has a very direct impact on our communities where we live and we want to be able to reflect all of that. And so ensuring that education, which is in my opinion, one of the greatest economic development to, public education especially, to really ensure that we are doing that properly, it is important to have the, the, the right school sizes to be able to make sure that it's being delivered effectively. You balance that with having an administration that is, you know, the right sized for it, not too bloated. And that's one of the things that we have done here too. We don't have a human resource director at the, at District 30. That's a role that has been shared by other members. And so that's just an example of how you manage both elements, making sure class sizes are small, given the schools, but also making sure that the administration is not too loaded.
Thank you. Candidate Manichoto.
Going to echo off of Amar, but yes, I believe that, you know, once you keep, you have to kind of keep it small to be able to really listen to the community and their wants and their needs. Once you make it too broad, it becomes very difficult to be as effective as we have shown in District 30. But you know, we kept it small. We're keeping it close knit. And I think that, you know, it just shows how close knit of a community we are. We like to keep it, you know, together and everybody feels like they're being heard because it's not, you know, we're not lost in the sea of a larger bloated community. But that, that would be my response to this question about keeping it close knit, close tight. And everybody has an equal opportunity and to be heard. everybody has an equal opportunity and to be heard.
Thank you. Candidate Wang.
Uh, thank you. See, see, it's my first time. Definitely, um, a lot of that perspective will be something for me to pick up as a learning curve, but as a parent who has uh been here for a while, who who have my uh who has my children attending the school. I believe it it's really depends on um the the natural balancing of the community itself. Like, like, what what's the the resource, the number of kids who are attending, the parents, the household, uh the economic, um, the over the overall situation. So, um, li- like everybody mentioned about it, it goes to the the people, the community, whether they would like, you know, this is the best timing uh to combine more resources into this topic, or maybe, you know, it could be um the best uh balance of the size of the school right now at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Blonder.
I will echo all three of my um my friends and will add that when we um started sending our older one to school, someone explained to me that this is um what they called a walking school. Um, and part of a of a walking school builds community. Um, when all the kids in the morning get to school together, um, they walk together, the parents are outside, relationships are being built. Um, once you're putting kids in both schools together, the distance is is too big to to become, um, you know, the the kids can't walk to from one to another. Um, there is also Willow Road, which is very hard to cross, so that makes it more challenging for kids to um to communicate and and maintain that um open uh community, neighborhood um atmosphere. Um, so I think that as long as we maintain it uh financially, physical, and make it uh responsible and and it makes sense, there's no reason for us to change it.
Thank you. Okay, next question. How would you work to assure that all students, including LGPTQ, LGDTQ plus students feel safe, supported, and represented in the district? And we are gonna start with Representative Mari Choto.
Um, I believe that, like everything else, I think we need to open everything to the community to get insight of, you know, sometimes the community has the best ideas, you know, something that even as a board, you know, we you talk and it's something that doesn't affect any of us personally, it's hard. So opening some kind of like a forum like they did with COVID where people can share their ideas of how we can support these students. Um, again, we can follow research, we can follow the state laws as best we can, and then from there, you know, take it one step into doing our own research to see what it is we can do to make everyone uh feeling environment. Um, but yeah.
Thank you. Candidate Wang.
Thank you. Um, well, I think it's very important for me to try to encourage the environment of opening and um understanding and respectful. Uh, which I believe in in our community, everybody has been doing a tremendous and um a um a great job from that perspective, from the children, from to the parents, to the schools, to the kids. Uh, that everybody gave me the feeling that uh we showed the best respect to understand each other whenever things are coming up. And we're also open to um um just embrace, you know, all the people from uh different countries like me, you know, from from different background, diversities with their different values, but communicate and share with each other reasonably, peacefully, and respectfully. That's that's what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Blonder.
Thank you. I think um prioritizing tolerance is the most important. Um, our district has um always been very um patient, kind. We are um, one of our of our our most important is the character counts and the six pillars. Um, we, as a district, we have to model. Um, and we have to have role models and make sure that, again, every child can see themselves as part of the community with no judgment and acceptance, and that you can see that today, even throughout our curriculums and within our staff and within our families, that we are accepting of all and tolerance towards towards all.
Thank you. Candidate Ri- Ritzky.
Thank you. No, I think exactly as my fellow candidates have stated. Uh, at District Thirty, we uh encourage our character counts elements, especially when it comes to kindness and respect and inclusivity. Um, and we teach our kids that from a very young age, because that's where you wanna make sure that they have those principles in their minds. And so we have to embody that as as board members too, to ensure that we are looking at all of our uh students and and community members regardless of their background, race, uh uh gender, as well as uh sexual orientations. And so wanna make sure that we are uh addressing all of those uh elements, especially if there are uh things that are needed uh for for certain members, uh given that they may be impacted more by certain decisions. We have to make sure that their voices are heard, uh and then balance those with whatever the uh the best is for all of our our children. Uh, so that's how I think we should be approaching it. We've done that so far, and we'll continue to do that if get given a chance.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is about safe gun storage. In Illinois, it is unlawful to leave firearms unlocked and accessible in households with minors under the age of fourteen. What is your opinion on safe gun storage? And how do you propose to encourage responsible gun storage practices amongst members of the school community? And we are starting with candidate Wang.
Uh, well, first of all, this is a hot topic. Um, personally, I think we should always uh um support everybody uh to act appropriately to um to protect our our abandonment rights. Um, but I think the bottom line is always go uh by the law and the regulations. So whenever and whatever is required by law and regulations, um, that is is the guideline that we should go for. Uh, but sometimes in some circumstances, there could be some conflicts periodically. And that's something you should come up to uh the leadership team, to the board for discussion. But at a personal level, I would encourage um at least the parents, adults like us, be responsible to take the lead in our own family to ensure the security and safety and the correct uh guidance to our kids in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Blonder.
Thank you. Um, I think it all comes down to educating our families and educating our community, that this is, these are the rules and that is what we're following. Our district is in contact constantly with the police stations both in Northbrook and in Glenview. Um, and the most important is to keep everybody safe. So as long as we have open communication, the message is clear that safety is a the utmost priority, you know, and we're not gonna um break any rules and educate the community to follow those um instructions and those rules and educate the children that those are the rules and that that is what we're following to make sure that everyone is safe.
Thank you. Candidate Ritzky.
Thank you. Yeah, as as Zavie mentioned, I think uh first and foremost, you have to follow the law of the land. Um, uh, when it comes to uh anything, especially when it comes to uh guns and and safety around them and storing around them. Uh, but being in the business of education, I think that's one of our key roles that we can continue to play. And uh as as Vee mentioned, we do partner up with both Northbrook and Glenview Police Departments that do a phenomenal job of making sure that they're highlighting those same safe practices around this. And so uh it is an important element and uh obviously educating folks about why it's important to to handle, uh you know, uh guns that way and store them in in a safe manner, keep them away from uh from young kids is is an important aspect of things that we have to uh ensure that we are educating folks on.
Thank you. And um last goes to can- uh candidate Mari Choto.
Um, I would have to agree with everyone. I think this is a very hot topic, but it's something that is bottom line, it's educating, and it's not just educating our children, but also our community, letting them know that this is the law and we're gonna follow the law according accordingly. Um, unfortunately, with the everything that's been going on with the guns and like the issue we had um in Highland Park, I think that's brought it to the fore run, so a lot of people are have been very educated. I see a lot of people getting um involved with mothers demand action and so it's, you know, um, things like that to get educated on what the law is and if necessary to try to change those laws if we don't agree. Um, but education um of the community of the kids and hopefully and also with the um the communication the board has with the police department. I mean, I've seen it firsthand. Even the smallest of um of an issue, they are there at a drop of a hat, so it's very um comforting as a parent to know that 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 resource is always available.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a a long question. I'm trying to decide how to do this. I'm gonna ask you two questions at the same time, and then there's gonna be a follow-up question, but we're gonna continue in the in the order we've been going. So this is about curriculum content. Um, so the first question is, what do you believe should be the relative roles of professional educators, the Board of Education, and parents in determining curricular curriculum content? And then the second part of that is, as a board member, would you seek to ban or censor any particular books or discussion? And we are starting with candidate Blonder.
Okay, then, if it's okay, I will start with the second part of of the the question with the second question. I absolutely do not agree with banning um books. Education should be um, that the whole idea of education is to learn. Um, if we're gonna decide that we're not teaching certain things or uh certain offers, then we're basically not educating our kids and preventing them from getting a fair education. Um, in terms of the first question of curriculum, um, you know, again, we we do not decide on the on the curriculum. We do decide on the priorities. Um, our district has been, um, you know, at the forefront of of um very good education. They're very knowledgeable. They do their research um in every field. Um, that's why uh we, you know, our scores are generally higher than than um other schools. And um, I believe that that it is a good decision for the administration to to continue to to choose um how to to educate these these kids with our support.
Thank you. Candidate Ritzky.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I agree with with uh Zavie when it comes to the idea of banning certain uh elements there. That's not really our role. I think it's about making sure that we are um introducing topics, especially if they're difficult ones um at the age-appropriate levels. Uh, and uh we do wanna make sure that uh there are certainly sometimes controversies within our communities that we have to make sure there's a voice, at least uh that those those voices are heard when it comes to curriculum. But at the end of the day, as a board, the curriculum is set by the state of Illinois, and so we wanna make sure that we're we're taking that and partnering with our professionals that we we've we've hired and have lots of experience with and taking their guidance and and thoughts around mat- balancing those those elements out. Uh, so I think using it uh from that lens, ensuring that that we are positioning our kids uh at the appropriate developmental stages that they're at and exposing them to to talk all kinds of topics that that are appropriate for them uh is the best way to 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 look at these other elements.
Thank you. Candidate Mari Mari Choto.
Um, I agree with uh Zavie and Amar. Um, it is not our responsibility to come up with a curriculum. Our goal is just to be able to support and see what we can do to find these uh professionals that can give us their opinion on what curriculum has been. Um, you know, um, presented, and then we can better, because as Zavie has said, we have shown in District Thirty that we are, you know, we have exemplary results in all our um testing. Um, but there's always room for improvement, obviously, and we just continue that path um of just using our resources to find the best form of curriculum for our students. Um, as to the second question, I agree. Um, we should not be able to censor. I think uh it is important to have a very comprehensive education for all our children. They need to be able to see every side of every story to be able to form their own opinions, um, and a very educated opinion at that. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Um, candidate Wang.
Yeah, yeah, I also agree. I I think uh instead of banning, uh uh, we should probably think of uh including more um professional and reasonable and helpful information uh selectively, because resources is limited, time is limited. Uh, but we should never ban something. Uh, we should always encourage to be encouraged to include more and more with the new future uh potential um knowledges and 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 professions into this curriculum. Uh, but how to do that uh really depends on both the administration and the voice and the value of this community and uh the board members' role. So talking about the first question, I think uh it's something for us to encourage doing what we've been doing good, which has already built up the uh the pretty good, successful school district in 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 Thirty. Um, and I think it's also important to remain selective options and be flexible for all the parents and the and the families. Whenever there comes a special needs, they should have uh they should have their right to be selective on this curriculum as well. Thank you.
Thank you. This is gonna be our last question, so this is the second part of the curriculum question. Um, are there particular policies, procedures, or curriculum areas of particular interest to you? And if so, can you share them and how you would address these as a board member? And we are going to start with uh candidate Ritzky.
Thank you. Um, I think as I mentioned before, the one of the goals that we've added over the past couple of years is diversity, equity, and inclusion. And wanna make sure that all of our curriculum has those elements in there. Uh, in terms of teaching kids different aspects of of how inclusivity, diversity can be beneficial. And so our our uh our team, uh administrative team has already accounted for a lot of that by introducing uh literature that is uh uh authored by by diverse individuals. And so continuing to foster that uh and encourage that is one of the key things is is what I'm uh most interested in and will be continuing to advocate for.
Thank you. Uh, the next uh person to answer will be candidate Mari Choto.
Um, for me, personally, the biggest thing with the curriculum that I I love to to talk about and hopefully um help the board move into the path of implementing is the diversity and inclusivity. Um, it's been such a huge undertaking, and they put that into their goals, and I've read through their goals. And I think from this this next sport is really gonna be implementing all those goals of getting in all these diverse authors, diverse curriculum into into the schools. Um, I also was informed that there's an audit of all the books that are being, you know, read and and taught, and so this is gonna be great. It's a great start to know where our weaknesses are, where we need to fill in the gaps. Um, even just my own experience with my children, um, I always researched diverse books and stuff, and lately I've been seeing my kids even come home with some of these authors that I I mean, I know five years ago, there was, they were never bringing them home, so I know that they're starting to implement it. So it's like I see it in in action and it's encouraging, and I hope I can continue to move the board in that direction or the district in that direction, excuse me.
Thank you. Candidate Wang. Candidate Wang.
Thank you. I I I think I don't have a very specific one, but I agree like like all the friends talked about earlier. Anything positive in the curriculum, it should be carried out. Anything including the, including mathematic, academic, sports, PE, anything positive in this curriculum, which can help the kids to grow to be strong, brave, open minded, caring, and they can be a very capable to pursue their happiness when they grow up. That should be something I definitely will encourage to to carry carry on. Continue doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Blonder.
Thank you. I will echo again on all three of my friends and really, the the most important thing in terms of curriculum is staying on top of on the one hand, seeing what that what is there to offer and what is new in order to make sure that our kids are developing in the right direction. And on the other hand, you know, you don't jump right right into anything, because you need to make sure that this curriculum has been tested, been tried on and investigated and researched and make sure that we're using the best curriculum for our children. Of course, in terms of priorities, I mentioned many times, and I echo my my, again, my my friends that diversity, equity, inclusion, and making sure that every child sees themselves as part of the of the the community, as part of Northbrook, as in Glenview, as part of the North Shore, as part of Illinois, as part of bigger bigger than that, and continue to support these kids so that again, they they only move forward and and make strides.
Thank you very much. Now we are going to start our closing statement. Every candidate will have ninety seconds. And we are going to begin with candidate Manichoto.
Well, I would I'd like to say that this has been such a great experience even thus far, just since the moment I've decided to run. I've been nothing but met wonderful people in on the board currently and all the other candidates, and it's just been such eye opening and such a learning experience, and I'm excited to serve the community and take this opportunity and try to better the whole for the whole. I hope we can see the support on April fourth, if not sooner, on April, March twentieth. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Candidate Wang, closing statement.
Thank you very much. Also, same here, I feel very excited and very thrilled to this opportunity. I've never thought about that before. Actually, it's the first time in my life. I feel I feel more things is about responsibility, and and now it's not only about acting as a parent, but also if I got elected to be the board member, it will be some sort of role to take care of the entire community, you know, try to take care for each kid, every kid here. I have witnessed the the happiest growing of my kids here in this community already for the past couple of years. I hope every family, all the kids, they can continue to have this strength and to remain the competitiveness of our community in the future, not only for the next four years, but the long time in the future, and become better and better. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Blonder.
Thank you. I think this we are running with with three other wonderful candidates on this forum. I am very excited to run again. I'm excited for taking the next level in our district again, now that we are accomplished the the physical in the in the buildings, it's time to take the the schools to the next level with a wonderful new superintendent that we're all excited to get to know and and support through her transition. And of course, I encourage everybody to do their 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 privilege and their right of voting, starting March twentieth is early voting, and of course, April fourth for the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ritzky.
Thank you. Senator Zavie, as an incumbent candidate, you know, over the past four years, I've worked very, very collaboratively with the rest of our board and our administration. And because of which, we've really achieved a lot of great things together. Obviously, I've listed some of them earlier in my comments, but I'm not going to repeat them again. But I think one of the key things that we've seen is that we've actually won two additional Blue Ribbon Awards in that short period of time for two of our of three schools. And so, you know, I've ensured at every step of the of the the stage that we are using sound data based decision making processes throughout each one of these decisions, and then balancing them with with the voice of our community. My goal for the new term will be to continue to push for that approach and then use some of this amazing facilities that we have to take our children's academics to the next level. You know, we want to make sure that as we are now coming out of the pandemic, hopefully, we have clear board goals and and focused resources that can ensure our kids can flourish. And so my experience in education has given me a lot of those skill sets. And so I hope to continue to use them and provide strategic value to the board. Or again, thank the the league for for this opportunity and our community members, and I I look forward for your support.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate everyone taking the time to be on here today. And I wish you all good luck in the in the election.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We wish you well in the election. Appreciate your willingness to serve your communities. And as several of the candidates have already noted, we encourage all of you, as well as your members of your district and all of the viewers of this forum to take advantage of the many opportunities to cast a vote by April fourth.